The meeting's called the order. First item on the agenda is accentuate the positive and we'll start with Shawna.
Hello, oh, thank you, Sir Chair Campbell and the rest of the board. Welcome to Phoenix Elementary. We're so happy, it's really exciting for you to be here at our very first, well, it's not our first board meeting, but it's like, feels like another, there's a lot more people here, so it feels like the first board meeting of the year. My name is Shawna Schleif, I'm the proud principal at Phoenix Elementary School. And first, I just want to say thank you to the board for providing the extra few days of in-service. I can't tell you how that has impacted our staff in our preparedness for this year. There's been a lot of learning, there's been a lot of preparation, and people are still very stressed, and yet there's still, there's a sense of calm and a sense of comfort in knowing that we're ready. And we're learning a lot, so that feels really hopeful, so just wanted to extend my appreciation to all of you for making that happen. Also want to give a shout out to our kindergarten team, we have Christian C. Kairos, Jennifer Hawkins, and then we added a late kindergarten add, Aletia Dusak will be teaching a second TWI program here, so that we have equitable numbers, and that feels really positive. So they are now in the midst of meeting with all of the families and getting to know them, and then they will do placements later. But also, I want to shout out to Wendy and Lori for helping welcome families and guiding them up to the classrooms and meeting with our students. There's a lot of excitement when kindergarteners come in for the first day of school or to meet their teacher and see their schools, it's really, really fun. Also want to just extend some gratitude towards Kelly and her leadership. We had a wonderful TWI meeting this week that just really brought people together to provide some unity and some clarity around kind of how we're going to continue to foster growth within our two-way immersion program. And so just exciting about, excited about our year and our study and our work around that. So I wanted to say thank you, Kelly, for that. And then finally, I want to highlight two employees that are kind of going above and beyond. So we have speech pathologist Tatiana and our sped teacher Allison, and I'll get you the last names Denise in a second. They have created what are called individual profiles. So instead of taking an IEP and then just handing it to the teacher, they took and synthesized everything on the IEP and are holding grade level meetings to really allow teachers to understand the individual needs of all students. And we're doing a lot of collaboration and coaching around how to support students' engagement from the get-go. And so we've been hosting those meetings and they did a lot of front-end work. And so I just want to highlight them because they're just really eager and passionate about making sure that all students get what they need. And that's it from PES, so I'll hand it over to Heather.
Good evening, everybody. Sir Chair Campbell, this makes me so happy. We just came up with that one. We're pretty proud of ourselves. Heather Low, the principal over at Talent. I want to echo what, a little bit what Shawna said, we had our welcome night for kindergarten last night at TES, and it was pretty, pretty fun. We had Kona Ice there, balloons, like a photo booth. The teachers handed out their backpacks, and it was just super fun, and it's fun for me also, kind of like you, Michael, having a kindergartner getting to experience that. So that was really sweet. And just a huge thank you to our kinder teachers, Green Calhoun, and all of our support staff for making it really a cool night for everybody, including me. Also, I did want to share a thank you to the board for that, pushing that playground approval through. I don't know if you've seen that at TES, but the guy showed up just like a week ago, and it'll be done by the first day of school, they say. I'm like, holy cow, are you sure? Because they are just busting all day long into the night, all weekend. And so just thank you for approving that. Thanks to John, I don't know if he's here, John for getting on it so fast. So we're just so excited to welcome the kids with a brand-new playground, and it's going to be so fun. So, and all the summer kids were like watching it going, oh my gosh, you know? So there's lots of anticipation. So thank you for that support. Also, I did want to share our plan for family engagement this year. It's new, as you know. We spent a lot of time last year as elementary and middle school with our leadership teams, and our family engagement team is really ready to kick off the year with this new vision of how we engage with our families, thinking of family engagement as an instructional strategy. So at the elementary level on Tuesday, when we would normally have like our meet and greet kind of pop in, we have a new plan, which is great. So we have three sessions that families can come, meet the teacher, kind of drop off the supplies, the traditional piece, and then we're going to sit everybody down for a meeting, like a presentation about, this is what it means to be a little pirate, or a Mustang, or a Hawk, and talk about the learning targets for the year and kind of set the stage for this re-envisioning work. So we're excited about it, and then coming up at the end of the month, we'll tell you more about our next event. So, good stuff there. Also, just a big shout out to our new teachers, holy cow, coming on board, new curriculum. They've just been amazing. So if you see these people, Linnea Funk Morales, she's our new TWI kinder teacher. We have Alex Shore, TWI second grade, Ashley Quay, she's second grade, and then Carly Richardson is our new teacher at PE. So just so excited to have them on board. And then we also welcomed Fabiola Ayala as an IA, which we love to bring back our people. So, and then the last thing I want to share is just an extension of like the appreciation for the extra days, and a real shout out to the community care specialist under Kelly's kind of guidance and leadership. They offered some pretty amazing PD for our classified staff, and people are still talking about it. So thank you to Kelly and those guys, and Brandon.
Thank you. Brandon Hammond Orchard Hill Elementary Principal, my apologies for missing last time. Had a family engagement. These two are so hard to follow, and it's just, I really feel like I'm trying to catch up. And I apologize also in advance, my voice tends to squeak when I get in front of a microphone, and I do break out in song. So just a real quick, really thank you. Coming into a district with as much as is going on right now, I am asking a lot of questions and for a lot of help, and absolutely have felt supported the whole way. It really has been really nice, especially for our family coming here and being able to turn to colleagues and, hey, what do we do here? Tell me the history, just been fabulous. And our staff, just unbelievable. There is a lot on their plate, and they just, I think the word is present, they are present. They're coming in, doing the work, and then they go home, take the breaks that they need, come back, present again. And I am kind of an analogy, I'm just used to that, telling stories to the kids, teach a lesson. So my analogy is this, we are house hunting, it is not fun. Trying to find a home that fits my four children, my wife and I, and then my father-in-law is moving in with us. So there's a lot of criteria with that, and we seem to think we found one. We're like all excited, it had some property, and the kids could go run and play, but there was an issue with the foundation. The house was destroyed, it was an 1870 home, the house was totally destroyed, but then they rebuilt on the original 1800 foundation. You walk into the house, it's a nice rise and a nice fall into the kitchen. So everything seemed to be perfect, but the foundation was off. And I'm connecting that to the need to start a foundation within our school, and I really think we have. We do the charter, right? We create a charter, the coolest thing. So as a staff, get together, talk about how we want to feel, what is the objective as a staff in our building? And we came up with six traits, and that's, they want to feel balanced, valued, inspired, connected, safe, and effective. And one of those connections is on Wednesday, Lori Evans, our instructional coach, came up with an amazing idea. It's like a progressive dinner where you go and you get a meal and then you keep going. Well, we did that within the classroom, and so we introduced all the staff members to each classroom. We got a treat that represented one of their favorites, and they got to talk about what was on their walls and why it was there, and what made their treat unique. So it was just a way to connect, build relationships, and just start that foundation. Brandon, nice to be here. Here's Aaron.
Good evening, board. Aaron Santi, principal at Phoenix Talent Rising Academy. Just a few quick notes, trying to be a little quicker than some of these other folks here. It's really poor modeling for our new staff, so I'll try to do it the right way. So we're pleased to be partnering with Talent Maker City, I think I mentioned to you guys recently. They've got the classes picked out for our electors there, there's going to be Intro to Carpentry with Hand Tools and Intro to Ceramics, so we're excited to get that started. We're going to have a parent orientation Tuesday night, 6:30, get all the relevant info out to them. And so we're excited to reconnect with our families with most of them that are coming back. And finally, we've got some new curriculum on ed mentum side of things for Language Arts, and that's going to be, I think, a really good step up for our families at the middle school level, so we're excited about that. And that's how you do it. Catherine.
We'll see how it goes. Okay, you can rate me at the end, okay, Aaron, give me a score, I want a score at the end, okay. Good evening, it's nice to see everyone. So yeah, I have a couple notes here, I want to make sure I got them right, because I feel like I submitted them, so if I say something different, Denise, I'm sorry. So my highlight, well, there's many, but certainly right now, one of them was a week ago, I was looking at our registration numbers, and I was still feeling a little concerned, because there's still 169 students that were question marks for me, out of like about 500. So in that moment, I was like, I do a lot of intentional scheduling, I feel like scheduling can really impact the whole community every day in all classrooms. So when I had 169 question marks a week ago, I still feel like I'm not going to be able to pull this off if I don't know who's coming and who's not coming. So the office staff was incredible, Erica and Allison as well, but also Felipe and Julie and Monique and Misty just got on it, and they have been making phone calls every day, trying to connect with families, registering families on the phone, and as of today, we're down to six students that we haven't been able to reach. So, but now we know who's coming, and some of them aren't coming, but at least we have a much, much better. So one week later, we're in a much better place. My other highlight is definitely just working with the teachers this week has been amazing. I asked a lot of them, we did have a number of meetings, we got to see each other every day for something. We're not going to meet tomorrow, though, you're off the hook tomorrow, right? But just, we had some really great conversations about instructional practice, about setting a tone, about starting the year really strong, thinking about those things that are, make a difference from day one. They even dove into some awesome rubric work about clarifying what they want students to do when they're in their classrooms. So the openness, the positive attitudes, the participation, the engagement was even way, way, way more than I was expecting. So I really appreciate that. And then I just had a couple more things, sorry, Aaron, now I'm probably over time. This is such a good list. So then, yeah, our student manager, Misty Hutzel, has, she herself made, printed, organized, stapled, and hole punched 300 student planners over the last couple days, so I really appreciate that. We're bringing back planners, but we're doing it in-house, a little project. And then Julie Lockett, our registrar, I just want to shout out, she, listening to her on the phone, listening to how she talks to families when they are registering is just such a joy, because she's so dedicated, she's so caring, she just really, really makes them feel really, really welcome. So all day, I've been hearing that outside my office, and I have really enjoyed that as well. So we're off to a good start, I'm excited for the year.
I'm not going to promise to be quick. I couldn't just say ditto to a lot of the things. Hi, Caitlin Cross, principal at the high school. So first, I want to echo that we had a great week and a half, two weeks of in-service, and also that the classified staff members at the high school have been just so grateful for that time to dive in, to have great conversations with one another, and are excited for what that looks like and applying their learning this year. And so just been hearing a lot of positives about that. Additionally, we've gotten a lot of positive feedback about PSYOP training and the CECS training that our certified staff participated in last week, and a lot of refresh, like refresher information, but thinking about things in a different way, especially after COVID and coming back to the classroom, just really excited, teachers to apply some of their learning strategies to make things more engaging for kids. The other thing is that, you know, just like Catherine said, we met with our teachers quite a bit this week, and we were able to just get on the same page. I think whenever we get to start a year with, you know, anchoring ourselves and what our priorities are, that's always very important. So we were able to talk about our attendance and tardy priorities at the high school, that's something we're really focusing on, is just making sure we're keeping students accountable and communicating to parents the importance of kids being to school and on time. And also student behavior support, what can we do to be clear? We talked a lot about Brené Brown's quote, "Clear is kind and unclear is unkind." So just talking a lot about like our policies and procedures and what we say we do, and if we say we do it, then we need to do it. And that was really great in having those conversations, and then also jumping on the family engagement bandwagon and just how we can use that as a strategy to build capacity for our families and teach them about what high school is and how we can help and what resources are available. So we're really excited about those things. A couple of specific shout-outs, you know, at the high school, one of the things we love to do is empower our students. And so Carolina Campbell is our link crew leader, she is amazing and wonderful, if you know her, and she was able to train a lot of student leaders this week, and they are going to welcome our freshmen back and do a half-day of intentional activities so that students have a sense of belonging and they see themselves on campus. There is about two upperclassmen to every 10 freshmen, and so really being intentional about the activities and what they're doing. And also Lisa Robin, who's our leadership teacher, is also working with our ASB and leadership students to create a welcoming environment for our new students. We're doing like a short intro day for them on Tuesday as well, and so a lot of intentionality going into those things. We also were able to spend a lot of time together. As a new leader, I'm very grateful for that, to get to know my staff and understand their needs and all of that. And so shout out to David Ford for hosting a barbecue, next time we might invite you, some of you were there, it was really fun. And then just from the activities and athletics, you know that there's been smoke rolling in. And so Dave Earhart and Maria Thompson have been working really hard to make sure that our teams still get practice. So there's a little bit of busing people here and there, moving games, all of those kinds of things. And we are set to still have our very first home game at our stadium tomorrow night, so we hope to see you guys there at 7:00. And we wanted to let you know that we have about 195 students participating in a fall sport or activity, which is wonderful, and that includes our marching band, which is back, and we're really excited about having them. So also Homecoming, which is one of our favorite events, is October 10th through 15th. So we're going to parade and do all the fun Homecoming things, so we hope to see you there.
Thank you, I'm Kelly Soder. I'm going to sneak back over here so I'm not in the television screen area. I'm going to shout out some things you've already heard, but I'd love to shout them out again. I'm going to start with our amazing community care team, you've probably heard their names, but Laura Mallett here at Phoenix Elementary, Rosario Medina at Talent Elementary, and Katie McCormick at Orchard Hill. They have just like jumped in gangbusters, they started on the 22nd of August, and two days later, they were running PD sessions for our classified staff. Hadn't seen, like, hadn't seen anything, our topics or anything, two days prior. They were amazing and just have just jumped in full, full force. We ran four sessions, they did an introduction to the community care program, and I brought you one of our super cool, amazing flyers that they've already created. They did an introduction to a Classroom Wise training program that's available on our ODE resources page. It's wellbeing, let me see if I don't make it clear, wellbeing, information and strategies for educators is the WISE of Classroom Wise, and they ran through a module with our staff, with our classified staff. And then we did mini-sessions on recognizing racial aggressions and interrupting bias. All of them were sort of like this tip of the iceberg thing, but we got really good feedback from our classified staff, and we're really excited and eager to kind of continue the next step, whatever that is, including our certified and broader, broader folks. They've also just been out, like out in the community, meeting people, making connections, introducing themselves, setting up resource spaces, they're just like flying a million miles a minute. One of which is a flyer to advertise the community care program and get the word out. And shout out to Bricia Morales also, who put her special final touch on the design, I'll give you that before we go tonight. The next piece of that related is our, we had a little snippet introduction to our, every student belongs, to the every student belongs rule and interrupting bias. We did that at every school, and our Coaching for Educational Equity team, the folks that went to the training this summer, helped participate in that, in that train, in that information. It was really only like 30, 45 minutes, meant to be just again, tip of the iceberg kind of thing. We look forward to ways to continue to share that information, the next step will be meeting with each building and figuring out what their kind of individual needs are around equity, around bias, around information, around professional learning, so we're excited about that. Last but not least is that TWI meeting yesterday, I think it was, it was a great opportunity. We were a little crowded, I think we might take a bigger space next time, but it was super awesome and just a great way to come together, there was good energy and excitement. We got to talk about student learning and really think about some common agreements as we launch. And we are going to meet regularly once a month, if not more, in this fall and into the year, and we're excited about continuing that work. I think that's all for me.
Good evening, thank you. Amy Hance, Food Service here, and like everyone, we're getting excited for the year to start up. This year has a lot of changes, believe it or not, for us of going back to the basics and back to the way school food service was supposed to be. We're losing a lot of waivers, and because of that, it's just got a lot of planning and details that go into it. So huge shout out and thank you to Yasmin and Debbie and Holly that have just been involved in helping me with even to training the staff and figuring out how we submit all the details to ODE, dealing with new things they're trying to throw at us, like breakfast after the bell, and it's just a lot of things that are happening really fast, but we are really looking forward to it in food service. We're actually going to be starting with almost full staff again. We're going back to salad bars, we're going to open up options and have more of our lines open. So it's really doing that trend of getting back to the basics, and we're really excited for that in food service and looking forward to still being a community-eligible program and having all meals free for all students is really exciting and an honor to get to be a part of with the program here.
Thank you so much. Any more accentuate the positives from the board? Microphone.
I know, we're all super surprised. I just want to say thank you for the invitation to come to the Welcome Back Breakfast on last Tuesday, and I just want to say that the excitement and energy to be back for the year was palpable in the stadium. It just was fantastic to see exciting new faces. And Brent asked us to partner with people around us and share the best thing of the summer, and the two people I was sitting next to said the best thing was getting the job at Phoenix Talent School District. That spending the day previously, they had spent, since they were both new hires, they had spent the day previous and just were so thankful to be there. So, there we go.
Anymore? All right, we'll move on to public comments. Do we have anybody here, present with us, who would like to speak before the board? Yes, go ahead, please just introduce yourself, we'll get you a microphone. Yeah, thank you.
Is it on? Oh, perfect. Hello, I just wanted to introduce myself, my name is Laura Latham. I am a sixth-grade Language Arts and Social Studies teacher at Talent Middle School, and this year's Certified Association President. And so I just wanted to meet all of you who I haven't met yet. Hi Catherine, I know you. So I just wanted to introduce myself and say hi to everybody.
Thank you. All right, do we have anyone participating online who would like to speak before the board? If so, please use the raise your hand feature. All right, hearing none, we will move on, and Superintendent Report.
Thank you, Chair Campbell. I'll tell you what, what you see is what you get. You just typically, this accentuate the positive is a little more long-winded, contrary to popular belief, but it is so exciting to start the year with so many great things. And I am just so thankful for this team, and we've said many times that this feels and looks different. This feels and looks different than ever before, this is, there's more intention, there's more strategic PD and training than ever before in, since I've been here in this district, and I'm going on my 19th year. So not only are we coming back from devastating fire and COVID, we're raising the bar completely with what we do for in-service and how we prepare for the year. So thank you to this team, I know there was a lot of time spent on training and organization and sometimes pulling our hair out, like, do we have enough time to get this done? But, but it was just truly amazing, so thank you. I do want to give a shout out to Denise on Board Book, this is, is this our first meeting on Board Book? Oh, feels like we've been talking about for a while and been doing it, but this is actually our first meeting on Board Book, so thank you for helping us through that. Just, it might have been today, actually, when she goes, oh, check, go into the Board Book and check the next agenda, and I go, how do I do that? But now I know, so it's good. In front of you, you have what we handed out today, some of you guys may have been at the barbecue, that was just an all-staff barbecue, Bob Staff, our very own preacher's barbecue provided. It was so fun to just kind of wrap up in-service. And contrary to also popular belief, we do still work tomorrow on Friday, so it feels like a Friday. It feels like it's been a Friday all day, but we still have one more day to get prepped. But you have a tattoo in front of you that you can use, we have many more too, if you want to, if you run out and it, or wears off. And then these magnets that you can put on your file cabinet, refrigerator, and just, you know, hang up something that makes you happy, so, or reminds you to come to work every day, or whatever it might be. But they were small, small gifts for the employees, but it was a good way to just get back together after pretty, pretty good intense trainings in PD. So also in your blue folders, the board asked to have an ESR update on the funding, and thanks to Yasmin Carabinus, she put this together based on information as of June 30th, 2022. This week, ODE also just made public the specific, in every district, the specifics amounts that people have polled from ESR 1, 2, and 3, and that's a public document there, and there is the website below that. You happen to have the itemized version in your packet, that's not necessarily what the public sees, they just see the drawdowns on the total amount when they're drawing down ESR funds. To give you just review, ESR 1 is essentially spent and done, that was to really get us back going after COVID with cleaning supplies, masks, technology to do virtual learning. We will finish our ESR 2 funding this year, and we haven't, we'll start drawing down on ESR 3 as well, and there are some specifics in there about what those are, include, so as far as salaries or equipment. If we get to financials, we can talk more about that if there's some questions. Also in your blue folders, we talked about in-service, it was a rich in-service. There was a question about a panorama survey, Nancy, thank you for bringing that up, and I wanted to share this data. Our district got a chance to participate in a survey. All the employees and all the local school districts that ESD serves participated in the surveys. Phoenix Talent Schools had the most participation out of anybody, so our data is valid. I think there was 200 plus out of 300 employees, and so a lot of response. I think there was two hundred plus out of three hundred employees. And so a lot of responses, which is great. I'm just going to point you to a few things in there. This was the presentation that I shared just on BTS Rising. But in the back of that presentation, it talks about some data points. And just highlighting a couple, you look at the first page and it talks about school climate. And this is what I shared with the teams that I presented in front of. Fifty-seven percent had a positive response on our school or district climate. That seems really low. We're going to work to improve that. But if you look at the average out of every district, we were the, this is where we separated ourselves the most. The average in our region was forty-six percent. So we are eleven percent higher than other districts in our region. Still low, we're coming, we were coming off the worst year in our school history or in, in education's history, I believe. And so we have some things to work on, but there are some positive signs. Another thing is you, if you turn back to almost towards the end, you'll see a number three percent. And this is. The question is, how often do adults at your school, district, or workplace have important conversations about race, even if, when they might be uncomfortable? Three percent said that that was the case in our district. That's why the intention on all the trainings that we've had this last couple of weeks and the trainings that we'll continue to do to increase that number. The positive is right below that seventy-eight percent of our staff feel comfortable about discussing race-related topics. So that's where we want to get to. We want all of these percentages to be ninety-plus. And that's what we'll work on this year. And I think these numbers will be different in the spring. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. Jessica is working with the E S D to get actually a, a pull out a format to where we can just give to the board. It's, it's not easy to really dissect it by school. Or by employee yet, but we want, we're looking to get this reporting out in many different facets. And so we can really dissect it. And it's new to the E S D as well, but they're helping us really kind of be able to utilize this information. Also want to highlight, I'm gonna be a little long-winded too. So there's a lot of superintendent report. Safe school meeting. We had a meeting with our local law enforcement just to prep for the beginning of the year. And really appreciate just Phoenix Police, Talent Police and our discussion. What came out of that, we really discussed what our reunification plan is in the event of some tragic event happening, whether it's a natural disaster. Or an act of violence. And we have a program that's called I Love You Guys. Many of you may have heard about it. The Columbine, a father of a Columbine victim started that and so many free resources per district. So we are in connection with them and utilizing a lot of those free templates to support our safety plans. We do have rapid response and many of our administrators are creating some clear expectations and directions. When things of that nature from fire drills to lockdowns to lockouts happen. But we will be using, looking at using that program and I invite anybody to review that. And if you have any questions, feel free to contact me. The other good discussion that came out of that is expanding our S R O program. Rick Nagel has been sharing that, that was, it's a desire and in light of recent events, we would like to see if we can expand that to elementary schools and get more S R O presence on, in our, in our sites. We have had a great relationship and a great program and have amazing S R Os right now. And there was some hope to be able to expand that. So we've, I sent an email to the city managers and the chief of police to get, to see if we can get a meeting set up later in September and we'd be happy to share what comes of that. But real quickly, OSBA has sent out, they, they do have an agenda. And if you are planning on going, it's November eleventh through the thirteenth to that Denise know, so we can get all registered. And when rooms come open, we will get right on those as well. I know those fill up quickly. Also in your blue folders, I shared a draft of these goals, superintendent goals last time and a couple of people weren't here. And so I've modified it just a little bit, not much at all, but just took the draft off. And if these, if there's no other comments, or if you guys want to chat with the, about these, I'd be happy to discuss them. And if not, we'll, we'll start working on them. One of the goals is to really connect with individual board members. And I sent an email out today to try to set something up for each of us in September. And I told my wife, I'm not working on this last one until these get approved. Which is exercising nutrition, that sort of thing. So, but.
That's why I saw you eating.
She'd be really happy if you said, these are go tonight. Yeah. That's all I have.
Brian, can I ask a question? What questions went into compiling the school climate percentage?
Yeah. So that's a good, that is a good question. And we will, maybe Jessica, we can get the full survey and give an example of those questions. Cause it, it broke up into six different areas. And so we can, we can share that whole survey with you. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. I will tell you, some of them, we've asked the E S D and it's anaram is a national, well, really worldwide survey on, on kind of gathering information. They, we do need to prep our staff a little bit on indicating what the question was asked. So the way they worded the question is a little confusing. So you don't know if it's gonna, I don't, you don't know if you should answer positively or negatively based on how it's worded. And so we need to, we need to clarify some of those. So we'll be better at that. But we will get an example of the whole survey.
I have a question.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Earlier in the, well, the end of the year, we talked to somebody, I believe, at O D E about S R Os. Is that, I'm sure you haven't heard yet, but I'm hoping that it's going to help us with funding. Is that still on?
Yeah. And, and that's a good point. It just to share, we're one of two districts in the state. That O D E is looking for information. We actually use some student investment account monies for S R O programs. To help with Talent Middle School's S R O program. And so they asked districts in the state that are using funds for that purpose to get some information. How's it working? How does this, how does this meet the needs of all students and things of that nature? So they were wanting to do a site visit this fall and we look forward to hosting them. And I'd love the board to be a part of that when they come down and visit. It'll also spark the question about is, will they be funding through O D E? Or even the federal, some federal funds to be able to support these programs. So it's a good question. And, and we're hopeful for that in October, I think they were shooting for.
Any questions for Brent? Okay. With that, we will move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to address the consent agenda. But before I do, I want to two comments. I'm so happy to hear about the S R O, how we're moving forward on it. This is, it's terrific. And the other thing I want to compliment my fellow board members for the use of their board book. If you notice, this old codger doesn't have one. But maybe I'll get up to speed here, but we'll see. So with that being said, I'd like to move that we approve the consent agenda with one exception. But also approve the minutes from August the eleventh, twenty twenty-two, the, our personnel report. And the board policy, and this is the exception, except for J F C J weapons in the schools. And for later discussion on that issue.
Okay, we have a conditional motion of approval of the consent agenda.
I'm not sure how to do this at this point because I, I would like to have J B B removed from the consent agenda for discussion as well.
Okay. Which one was that?
It's the equity policy.
Would you like that for information and discussion for today's meeting?
No, it can be an action item for today's meeting. I just, we can talk about it and still approve it or have discussion.
Okay.
About it. I think similar, I don't know, I shouldn't speak for Rick that what he wanted to do as far as J F C J.
I think, yeah.
I definitely want to discuss it, but if, if it doesn't fit tonight's agenda, I can wait till.
Okay. Why don't we just for consistency, we'll just put them both on action items and that'll allow us to facilitate some discussion. If that's, if we can just attach your motion to Rick's, if that works. So we have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of policies, J B B. And what was the other one?
J F C J.
J F C J. Okay. Great.
Is that for discussion tonight?
Yeah, we'll just move into, yeah, that way we can have a motion second and the discussion and we can decide where to go from there as a board. Yeah. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Any objections? We'll just do it that way. Okay. No objections. So the consent agenda is conditionally passed with the exception of those two policies that will move to action items. Speaking of which, action items. The first, the first is the item G one, which is the revised declaration of surplus items. Do I have a motion for this action?
I was, do we have our cheat sheets? Hi Denise, where do we find our cheat sheets on Board Book?
Oh, in terms of suggested motion language, it's in, if you click on, if you click on the action item. It has recommended motion language, right?
Oh, I'm on the agenda. So maybe it's not where I'm supposed to.
Okay, now we're going to be nice to ourselves. We're gonna. Okay.
I know we should know how to do this. No, we don't now. You're.
Within Board Book, if you're clicking, if you're clicking view meeting details. If you click that and then you're following along each item, if you select on that particular item, it has recommended motion language.
There you go. Read that out loud, a little louder, please.
I wanted you all to squirm a little bit.
Under the old fashioned method, here's a piece of paper.
You know what? This is, this, I love this because it means that we all get to learn together. We all get to fumble together. We can experience some humility and this is great. Thank you Denise.
So as we're moving, I moved to approve the revised surplus list as presented.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Nancy, seconded by Policy or by Polly. Policy Polly, I'm gonna call you Policy Polly, Polly. Yeah, you're not even the one who pulled policies off the consent agenda, but you're sitting next to somebody. No, just kidding. Okay. All right. Any discussion? On this item, the only thing I'll add is that we are declaring, and this is a blue folder change, a recent blue folder change. Is that we are declaring a ten feet wide by a hundred and thirty-two foot long section of property adjacent to the bus loop entrance of Talent Middle School. That's a new addition, recent addition to the surplus. So a small strip of land. Any other discussion? We'll take it to a vote. Rebecca?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes. Okay, establish meal prices.
I'm of approval of the recommended adult meal prices and student second meal prices. I'll second.
Great. Discussion?
Yeah. What, I need some explanation. What, what do we mean by a second breakfast and the approved C E P?
Hold, let's get you a mic. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah. Under our program here at Phoenix Talent Schools, all students may receive one meal per day. So that means one breakfast per day, per student, one lunch per day, per student. So if a student chooses to eat a second entree or a second meal. Then that is the second meal price. We do have unlimited fruits and veggies. Kids can come up to the fruit and veggie cart as many times as they want. And that is not at charge. It is just for a second full meal under O D E's regulations.
Thank you.
And I had sort of a follow-up to that. And that is how, and you may not have these numbers in front of you, but how often does that happen? And what happens if a student is hungry, wants a second meal and doesn't have money in a preloaded fund or something like that? How does your staff handle that?
So I would hope that they encourage them to go to the fruits and veggies bar. Like I said, we are going back to full salad bars this year. And it is unlimited. The kids can come up for as many trips as they want. We stock it with lots of fruits, lots of veggies. I mean, it, I personally, if I go in and eat a labor meal, that's what I want is just the fruits and veggie cart. So it, it really is a plenty of food that the children can get. That is where we would have to encourage them though, just to meet regulations. In order to get the reimbursement to allow all children to get the first meal free, we do have to set some price for a second meal. We are, like I said, we are allowed to offer all the unlimited fruits and veggies that we want and that the children can eat. But we do have to charge for a second entree.
So that's a condition, if you will, of the community eligibility provision is, or.
Even if you weren't community eligible, it would still be a condition of being under the school meal programs, being under national school lunch programs, school breakfast programs, just getting any reimbursement, even if you would be a paid, reduced or free district. You would still have to charge for a second entree.
Okay.
I was just curious. So a long time ago, there used to be like charge cards, you know, for, for meals, which, when there was no free meals. Is there that option? Or is it like if they wanted the second meal, they had to pay right then and there?
So you can load money onto their accounts. All the kids in secondary, actually, even when we ring up their first meal. Again, to meet regulations and make sure that we're not giving duplicate meals to the same chi- children. We will be ringing up meals under their student I D number. That goes into a system that we call meal time. That is where we load money in for parents as they, you know, they can write one check for the year. They can write it for every week, however they would prefer to do it. And then it just pulls out of that account when they do it. So in the high schools, actually with a lot of work from Yasmin, Debbie. And Yasmin could probably speak to all the other people that helped us with this, but we're really excited. We're going to their student I D's, having a barcode. So, and we got new scanners. Alan helped us test them out and we're gonna have our new P O S system set up where we can just have the kids scan their card without even having to enter their I D with the backup of they can enter their I D number. If they don't have a scan, their card with them, middle school, we are still gonna do the six-digit I D number for ringing up the food and having the money on their account.
Amy, is there a protein on the salad bar or is it all just fruits and veggies?
It is all just fruit and veggies. Yeah. So in school meal programs, so like national school lunch program, protein, we would probably call it as meat. Meat alternate is the way we say it. And that is one of the components that basically makes up an entree that has to go in those first reimbursable meals. There's minimums and maximums depending on what level of school we're talking about.
I was thinking like hard boiled egg, black bean type of protein.
So hard boiled egg would be our meat alternate that would be part of the entree now. So hard boiled egg would be our meat alternate that would be part of the entree. Now, black beans funnel funny, I can count it either way. I can count it as. Meat, meat alternate sometimes and I can count it as veggies. So you will see beans on the fruits and veggie cart. Yes.
Chair Campbell, I mean, I just wanna, I mean, this is all new for Amy and her team as well. And I know Yasmin and Debbie and Holly have been uh. Very involved in creating a kind of pre-COVID, how we used to do business. Uh, setup and there's also breakfast after the bell. That was uh, that we're working through and we are all set for that as well. So that some just logistics that have had to. Uh, take a lot of planning and discussions. So thank you for that. The board also asked for data on how many second meals. We've had so many waivers the last two and a half years that the data was, that the data was kind of skewed and data before that wasn't necessarily available. So. Um, I do think we can do uh, possibly a wait and see. The board mentioned that they may just want to see about, can we just cover a second meal if that happens? I mean, not knowing how much it is going to happen. Um, if that comes up, we definitely approach the board and saying this, this might be something for the board to consider.
Um, I have a question. So. I'm just trying to wrap my head around, sorry. Um, I've seen on social media where there like sometimes, and I watched the last meeting. Um, and milk wasn't, it was a question, some students want milk, but some students don't drink their milk. Is there a way to? I mean, I don't know if there's a sharing issue or and all of that, but is there something, I've seen some schools where they have, if, if there's something wrapped. It can go on a cart for students and then it doesn't charge. Do we have something set up with that?
Yeah, so I actually defer to my principles of which ones would like to do it, but I know Catherine here is already signed up that she would like to do one. So we call them share tables. They, for federal purposes, they're allowed. Then they defer to our health inspectors. Our health inspector said anything shelf stable is fine. If we're going to do something like milk where it has to be temperature controlled. We would need a unit that could be considered a share. Hold unit to maintain those temperatures to make sure food, of course, is safe because it's not going to be very productive if we share food that makes them sick. Um, so we are definitely starting in the middle school. I know Heather used to do it and actually her kitchen manager was like, well, we always had one before COVID. And I was like, well, let's talk to Heather. So I, I have a feeling many of them will like that. Most of the time it does end up being more of the fruits and veggies that we use. Later as a snack in midday then. And a lot of things kids don't know too is while that fruits and veggie cart is unlimited during the meal period. They are also allowed to take one item with them out of the cafeteria. So they can choose to take it themselves too for a snack later in the day.
More questions? I asked the question first and I realized, oh wait, I'm supposed to do that last, sorry. So does a student get a milk for free with their first meal? So this is second, if somebody wanted a second milk, that's the price for it. Okay.
So the price for just a milk begin kind of gets into those regulations and I would highly encourage all families to note this. A reimbursable meal is three out of five components. Three of those components could be a fruit, a vegetable and a milk. So even if mom packs a meal and the kid just wants a milk, if the kid is willing to take a fruit, a vegetable and a milk. That's a reimbursable meal and now it can be free. But if they only want a milk. I buy my regulations have to put a cost to it.
Okay, so I have another question for you, sorry. How much are we recording food waste? The reason I'm asking is because a couple of years ago. I went to Washington DC and we had a discussion with legislators about food waste. That was one of the things that OSBA wanted us to talk about. And they were just shocked about how much food waste. They, we were getting because of policies like this. If you get a milk, you have to have a fruit and vegetable. So the fruit and vegetables go in the trash or even if it is. A recycle bin area, they weren't realizing that some of these policies they were making was a ton of food waste. So are we keeping track of that? So when Sarah and I go uh, do our policy things that we can let them know there's still a big issue of food waste, if there is.
So I don't think we've really kept track of it yet. I will tell you behind the scenes on my end, I've had some SEDEXO support that there is a new. Company out there partnering with SEDEXO to help us watch it because of SEDEXO's initiatives to help reduce waste. Um, so ask me again next year and I can probably give a better answer. As of last year, we just had um, thanks to the support of Rogue Valley Farm to School. They helped us test up and pilot a program to watch our waste. One, it started once a week. Um, I think it moved to twice a week where we then took our food waste of ones of some of the items that could be reused. And put it into hog feed.
Any other questions? All right, and thank you, and thank you Brent for the update and thank you for answering all the questions. I think at the heart, not to speak for everyone, but at the heart of. Our questions, particularly with the second meals is we don't want a kid to be turned away for a couple of dollars who's hungry and. Um, so we're, we're very curious to know what that looks like this year with the new, you know, with the new normal, if you will. Um, to get an idea of what that, you know, what the, what those numbers look like, I think.
Absolutely. And I guess I'd just encourage too, if parents are concerned, if anyone's concerned, please feel free to come and see that salad bar, see the meal that you can make. With just the salad bar without even an entree. Um, that's one of the reasons that I love working for SEDEXO is that we do the unlimited fruits and veggies and. In Nebraska, when I had any of those concerns, I would bring a parent to eat with me. And they'd be like, wow, this is a better salad bar than we have at uh, you know, Ruby Tuesdays. Yep.
That's great. Thank you. Okay. With no more questions, we'll take it to a vote. Rebecca?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
I vote yes, motion passes. Board operating agreement. Motion?
I move to approve the board operating agreement as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Polly, second by Rebecca. Discussion?
Maybe. I, I have a question, a couple of questions for you. I, I noticed in under board rules and responsibilities, item three, it says the uh. Chair is going to develop the agenda with the vice chair. Is that what we're doing currently? Have the vice chair on the.
That's, yeah, you could, you could say that's the case. Uh, it, sometimes the chair will consult with the vice chair on certain agenda topics. It's kind of been the way it's. Got, but it's, it hasn't. It hasn't been, uh, it's not always the case. But the vice chair has been sort of there to consult if needed on certain topics.
Overall, that was excellent.
Great. Well, we can thank Sarah for that. So it was a, it was a, a result of Sarah and I meeting with Brent and kind of. Taking what we know about this board and, and putting it together. So I appreciate it. Any other questions or discussion? Did you have some?
Yes.
We had a motion by Polly and a second by Rebecca. Correct, yep. Okay. Rebecca. And this is why Dawn's looking at me saying, this is why I write it down, Michael. Where's your pen and paper? Hello? I'm just doing it all in my head. Okay, we'll take it to a vote. Rebecca?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Policy Polly?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Operating agreement passes. Board self evaluation form, motion?
I'm of approval of the board self evaluation form as presented.
Second?
I second.
All right, it's been moved by Sarah, seconded by Dawn. Discussion?
Yes, we had like one question.
Go ahead.
Item nine. With all employee groups, are we talking about all school employee groups?
I think I can answer it, but feel free to jump in. I think when we talk about employee groups in this context, we talk about licensed. And classified and administrative. Confidential.
And that's.
Yeah.
That I meant by school.
Yeah. Groups, which, yeah. Schools are made up of many of those classifications. Any others? All right, hearing done, we will take it to a vote. Rebecca?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
I vote yes, motion passes. All right, and now we have the two policies. Um, we'll start with. Which? We'll start with JBB. Policy JBB. And I'll entertain a motion to pass that policy is where we're at. Do we have a motion to pass policy JBB? Trying to find it. Okay. Take your time. Thank you. If you're following on Board Book, I think it's actually thirty-four. Yeah, thank you Laura. Probably sixty-two in the original PDF document. That's the equity policy, yeah. Somebody who'd like to make a motion? We can make a motion and second to pass the policy and then we can have discussion and. Go from there.
How do you feel about?
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion. I'm move approval of policy JBB as presented. I have a second. Thank you, Rick. Been moved by me and seconded by Rick. Discussion?
Part of the reason I asked to pull this out was I'd really like to see some future work on adding um, more of an action base. To how the district directs this policy and so um, I look forward. It, it's just the timing. We talked about this when it was time to do section J. Section J. Came during the summer, right on the heels of section K and got behind in our required running. And so now with um, a new admin overseeing and really shepherding the district equity work and um. So I would like to see um, a little bit more action based language included. So as a board member. I can really understand how to best implement this policy for decisions that are made.
Okay, any further discussion?
So who do you think, I know you said that we couldn't get help from the new staff, but like. Um, would this be with the DEI committee or?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Oh, yes, absolutely. She's shepherding the team of equity for the district, so. Yes, yes, absolutely.
If I remember right, you didn't like the feeling part of it.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know how. No matter how our best efforts, we can control how people feel. And that's my struggle in that sentence is. And so I'd really like to see. Versus around feelings. I'd really prefer to see as a. Policy when we're implementing and making decisions. We're using data to look at things. If we're looking to make choices and decisions, I'd like to see. Action words on how to do that instead of. And so I'd just like a little bit more robust or um, action based language.
So that's the only part, isn't that first paragraph, right?
Well, I would, I, I don't see any action based words in the po- in the. Should, should, you know, I, I'd like to see. Provide, implement. I mean, the team can come together. There's a lot of different examples out. Of other districts policy that really has um, more uh, targeted. Specifics of actions that will be taken and because policy is about the framework of how specific. Um, priorities or rules for a district are implemented as a board. I'd appreciate a better direction in how to look through that lens in making decisions for the district.
Chair Campbell, may I?
Please.
Thank you for that. And regardless of the vote that's coming up, we'll take that as a board directive to staff to look at this. Policy and bring the team together and um, bring recommendations to the board in the future. Regardless of the vote.
Well, and I appreciate that and I anticipate that this policy is going to pass, but I felt. I sort of feel.
No, thank you.
But I didn't um. I didn't vote for approval of this policy the first time it came through for that reason. It didn't change. It didn't. Seem like it was prudent to approve it. Blanket again without conversation, which is why I asked to pull it from the consent agenda. But yes, I, I, I'm. Under complete awareness of this policy is.
Well, and, and the reason I'm supporting it is um, I, and I, I understand what you're saying. Um, I think those statements in that first paragraph are. Affirming statements of what the district believes. And I think that, that serves to um, support. How people feel. Um, so what we're really saying is what we're committed to, which I think is. Actually, in both of those first two sentences, we're committed to, believes in and committed to honoring the student. Honoring the inherent worth and dignity of every human being and we believe in and are committed to creating an inclusive culture where every student, staff member and family feels seen, heard and but validated. And so for me, it's the, it's. Those statements, what we believe and what we're committed to that are the action words for me and which is why I'm fine with it as it is, but I respect your thoughts and um. I think given the change in landscape and leadership and oversight into these important issues, it's good for us to review these policies. Frequently anyway, so I think um, there's a lot we can look at to make sure that we are. Strong in our support of supporting all students, but I, I, I will be voting yes for this policy. supporting all students, but I I I will be voting yes for this policy. Any other discussion?
Um, so I was on the DEI committee when we did this policy. Um, and I vaguely remember, correct me if I'm wrong, whoever else was on the committee at that time, because I know it's changed a lot. Um, is that this was one of our first things that we worked on and it was something discussed that this was like. Um, it's something that they were, the committee was originally going to review yearly because this is something that we know, we know equity work changes and we know things change. And so I think the original plan of this policy was to actually be reviewed and updated to what would work for our district. Um, with COVID, this was pre-COVID, with COVID happening and stuff, I think that that kind of slipped through the cracks and we added people and things changed. So I personally think that that was the original intent, was to change this policy after a year anyways. And so therefore, I'm thinking that for me being on that original committee, I have to say, hey, that was the original intent, so I'm not sure how I'm gonna vote to tell you the truth, because I, it's kind of, yeah, confusing.
Can I ask a procedural question?
Please.
Because I have no clue.
I'll do my best to answer it accurately. Go ahead.
Uh, we have someone right next to you who might know that answer on the side of you. Um, so if we, if we're gonna vote on just this one, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and if we, if we decide, if we didn't have this policy, if we voted no and it's and it's not in there, then do we have a deadline for something to be in there? What's the process to remedy that?
This is just a policy edit, for lack of a better word. And so should, or update, thank you, should it, should it not pass? Or if we were to table it, our existing policy would remain in place, which is essentially the same. Absent the very minor changes that came up as part of this policy review.
And when you say table it, meaning they would make some edits and then they would come back with that revised for us to vote on, right?
That's an option.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah, so essentially, there's not much changing regardless of the outcome of the vote. Because this is, this policy is very similar to um, the one that's already in place. Unless someone wanted to make a different motion. I would recommend that we either vote or table it regardless. Um, but yeah, it's already a policy in place, not a new adoption.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions?
So I'm not sure where it goes, but I do really appreciate the idea of um, updating some language for it to be more action-oriented and also including in this policy that the revision will be done on an annual basis. Because um, my hope is that in this growth process, that we just continue to refine it and better um, align it into what our values and vision and mission is as far as our equity work and commitment to our families and our students. So I do like that. I, which I'm not really sure how it goes. My assumption is it gets revised and then it comes back for us to pass it. Once there has been um, updated language.
Yeah, and we can pass it as is now, which is essentially passing the policy that's already in place. With what, what changes do we make? Just a legal reference, right? Okay, so um, yeah, that would be, I think it's pretty clear there's desire from the board to have staff look at it with the committee as well and bring it back. So as chair, I will make sure that happens and that we, we're, I'll work with Brent and um, we can work with Kelly to, to determine an appropriate timeline for that, understanding that we are at the beginning of the school year. Um, but yeah, and then that, I I agree, I was thinking the same. It would be good to, to describe, prescribe in the policy itself that it's reviewed annually and put a, put a deadline in there, so. And somebody could make that, we have a motion and a second on the table, we'd have to vote on first, but somebody could make that motion as well.
I'm just grateful that Sarah spoke up about it. Makes sense to me.
Yes. Okay, deleted a footnote. Updated a legal reference and changed capitalization. That's how it's different from the current policy. Let's go ahead.
Um, this is just, sorry if I'm overstepping, this is just a suggestion. Um, since it's just that information that you're, that they're changing. And we've already directed in this conversation to staff what we want to do. I think passing this with the, with the understanding that this is coming back to us in a certain amount of time. I don't know if we wanna put that amount of time, but these little changes I think are fine as long as we can somehow make sure. So I don't know, I guess my question to you is, with the motion in place, I don't think we need to add, change the motion, because I think it's, we can already direct it, right?
Yeah, I think we're in a good place. Let's go ahead and vote. Rebecca?
Yes.
Sarah?
No.
Holly? Nancy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion passes and the directive from the board is duly noted. So we'll work with Brent on a timeline that makes sense. And I think probably get input from staff on what would be the appropriate deadline to include in the policy itself. Okay, great, good job. I don't know who I'm saying that to, maybe myself, either way. Probably not myself. Okay, policy J F C J.
Let's see if you can do a good job on this one.
I know. Getting my comeuppance.
What got my attention is uh, looking at KGBB. Firearms prohibited i- in the district. Uh, or on, no person on grounds of the schools controlled by the board, including the school buildings, will possess any firearm except when said firearm is possessed by a person who is not otherwise prohibited from possessing the firearm and is unloaded, locked in and blah, blah, blah. Uh, if you wanna read KGBB, but when I look at the uh, our, our notes on here, uh, relative to sections K and L, the staff recommendations, I guess is what we call them. There's a last sentence here, it says, since the board did not make this restriction, the policies should not be adopted. Or this policy should not be adopted. Let me go back. Um, we're, we're talking about policy J F C J, which is what we're in now. And with this notation, it says, since the board did not, J F C J, did not make this restriction. This policy should not be adopted. What concerns me is that we didn't adopt J F C J. And if you look at J F C J, uh, well, one line says the superintendent may authorize persons to possess weapons for courses, programs and activities. But, but it prohibits firearms on our, in our schools. And, and that's personally, I just think we should take a strong stance and not have firearms in our schools. Based upon what has happened across the country. Unless they are in the hands of a police officer or somebody trained to, to deal with uh, disruption of any kind. So anyway, uh, uh, that's why I objected to this one is because we didn't adopt J F C J when we should have.
Well, yeah, so.
Go ahead.
It's part of, part of, it's part of the, of the consent agenda for today with, with Section J that we were approving today as part of the consent agenda. So I think I, the assumption was that it would be passed along with all the other J policies.
It is gonna be, then I'm confused as to the.
Yeah, so that footnote in KL, which is in our information and discussion um, was, I think, put in there with the assumption. And Brent, can you help speak to this a little bit?
Uh, and it could have been worded a little clearer, the assumption of the approval of the consent agenda and the policy J, that this, this policy is not recommended or needed. So you're right, that policy was not adopted yet in, uh, because it was in the consent agenda. So it could have been worded as with the assumption of policy J, uh, uh, the consent agenda J, policy J F C J. Then staff do not recommend this policy. And so pulling this out, then that, that's when we can have this discussion as a board.
Yeah, I'm still somewhat tense on this. If we approve the rewrite, will this policy be in there or not?
K will not. Uh, rewrite of what? Oh, yes.
J will be in.
So if we, well, that's why you pulled that out. That's why J F C J is on for action right now. And is your question if that policy and what's the K policy that you're looking at?
Uh, the K policy is a where to go? There.
KGBB.
KGBB.
Yes, then we would, staff would recommend if we adopt J F C J as presented, this policy. KGBB staff would recommend not having it in there, because it references this policy, correct?
Okay, so tonight we would be looking at the J policy.
Yes, yes.
And if we approve it as written, then when we deal with the K policy in the future. It will not, you're recommending we don't do the K.
Yeah, because it's conditional on this, the language in the J F C J is written.
Why, why is that?
Because there's, uh, well, there's, uh, this has been, made a lot of news lately, as you have said. But as um, there, this J F C J allows people to carry concealed weapons on our campuses.
I'm sorry, which one does?
J F C J.
Yes, right.
And our previous one did as well.
Except students can't regardless.
No, no, but if you have, yeah, concealed weapons, you can carry on campus. And this is what we're saying that we can, uh, in J F C J as presented, continue that policy. And so conditionally, the K policy, KGBB, would not be relevant based on how we've adopted the J of C J policy.
Okay, and, and that, and I guess that's my sticking point is that I would like to not allow those with concealed weapons to come on campus. And if we approve this one as, as written tonight, they can still come on campus with concealed weapons.
If they, if they have a license to do so.
That with.
With their concealed carry.
With a license, yes.
That's correct.
And I personally am very opposed to them coming on campus, whether licensed or not.
Okay.
So how do I get around that?
Well, we have a, we don't have a motion on the table yet, actually. So some, someone would need to uh, make a motion to approve the policy. Um, either as presented or with changes and then the process can play out as it will. Um, or we can exercise any other options the board would like to take, such as tabling or. So we need a motion of some sort to take action.
Trying to think of the motion I might be able to make to to change it to to prohibit somebody coming on campus with a concealed weapon or any weapon.
And I would have to know where in this policy that language, that optional language exists. And I, I will just add though, um, before we make a motion, this is an obviously very important topic. Um, that is extremely top of mind, not only for our board, but other boards across the entire country. Um, and so I do think, and, and I think that our community has strong feelings about one way or the other. So I would recommend we keep that in mind and perhaps a better option would be to table it or um, and, and then as a community have a process to discuss this issue as a community and see where, where we land. If we're going to make a substantive change to our current practice and policy, that would be my recommendation. Um, but a person could make any motion they wish and we can go from there. And this is a policy that already exists, so unless there's a change made with it tonight, our, it will default to our existing policy, which is as you described, Rick. Which does not prevent someone with a concealed carry.
Well, I would like to, well, I'd like to make a motion that we uh, adopt all the board policies. The rewrite of Section J with the exception of this, which will be addressed at a later date.
Okay. Yeah, we, yeah, we passed J with our consent agenda. Do you want a table? Would you like to make a motion to a table of this policy?
This policy?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Table, it's been seconded. Okay, spin table. So no action required tonight. And I think we'll um, perhaps discuss um, and uh, information and discussion at a future meeting. Okay. We do not need a vote on, we don't need a vote on a motion to table, so just for clarity. Okay, and that is all of our action items. We're gonna take just a five-minute recess and staff, thank you for all your hard work, um, these past couple of weeks. You are welcome to leave whenever you'd like. I do think we have a couple of board members who hasn't, haven't gotten to meet some new staff members yet, so maybe hang out for a couple of minutes. Other than that, go home, be with your families. Thank you for everything and we'll be back in five minutes.
And that's all staff members here.
Yeah, whoever, you're the boss, whoever you wanna send home, you send them home. Information and discussion, financial update.
The, um, the, I, actually this is scary. All the knowledge is just left. I will. Uh, I don't know if you saw the revenue forecast that came out, um, yesterday, I think, that, uh, had again, record breaking, uh, collections. Um, they're expecting a, a record kicker at this biennium, 3.46 billion. Uh, educational stability and rainy day fund cash reserves estimated to end 21, 23 biennium at 5.7 billion, which is 20% of the state's budget. So revenue forecasts are positive. I think the email we got from Arcosa representative legislative policy, uh, you, many of you name, know Morgan at COSA, just cautions us about the legislative session coming up. We are going to have to have all hands on deck, um, with rosy pictures. I think people are going to say schools are funded adequately. Uh, but we're still a long ways away from quality education model, especially when the cliff's coming in a couple of years with ESSER funds and to us ADM security. Um, but good news on, I mean, it's kind of good news, bad news, but, and that's all I had. And any other questions on ESSER if you wanted to, um,
Any questions? Financial update? Okay. Facilities bond update?
Uh, gave John the night off. He's been working hard with his team and they've been shorthanded and they've just been doing a ton of stuff for our staff since they've come back. But in your blue folders, uh, every year we have to share kind of the healthy and safe schools plan with you. He has put together his report on that. And you don't have to take any action. It's just for you perusing that. And if you have any questions, you can reach out to John.
On a facility bond update, where, where are we with the next step in the Culver Road property?
Yeah. So we will, um, that has to go to, for county approval and all of that. And then we will start meeting with that group. I think he mentioned last time about turning that bond oversight committee into a facility oversight committee. And we'll try to get, uh, that group together this fall and start talking about how the next steps in that.
So I apologize. My question is, how do we get in front of Jackson County to get the urban growth boundary approved?
I'll, I'm not sure that answer, but I can check with Jay and see what that timing is. I'm not sure that's going to be a hurdle. I'm just not sure what the timing is when they, the city of talent sends it to Jackson County. So.
Oh, it, we're, are we waiting on the city of talent to do something? Cause I thought city of talent passed all this.
Yeah, but I'm not sure what they have to do, the process of that happening. So.
Okay.
But I can send out a memo, um, when I talk to Jay.
Thank you. And then also, um, what happened with the long range facility plan getting approved by all the jurisdictions? I feel like we hit a serious snag and now it's 10 years, five, eight years after the facility plan?
The best person to answer that is to Jay to write up a memo to the board, uh, and see where we are on that. That got kind of lost in all that shuffle.
Yeah.
Um, and to tell you the truth, I just don't know.
Okay. As we move forward on all of our things.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else on facilities or bond? Okay. Legislative OSBA update.
I sat in on a meeting last week with OSBA about, with, um, LPC, um, looking ahead to what they're calling the Legislative Roadshow, which used to be called the Fall Regional Meetings. So, um, October 24th is, uh, Medford and ESD helps facilitate that for our region. And they're hoping to have OSBA board members and LPC have a more active role. So Dawn and I talked today and we're going to meet with, um, those people, Richard and, um, Lori about what sort of role it is that they want us to have. And, um, the other thing that came up that I thought was interesting, um, out of that meeting is looking at if a, in the, with it being election season, if there is a candidate that is asking for, um, endorsement from, as, as a school board member for their campaign or, um, OSBA has written into their, operating agreement that you use in parentheses for identification purposes only when you use your school board member title. And they may or may not be wanting you as Sarah Crawford. They may be wanting you as Sarah Crawford, being a town school board member. And so, um, I just thought it was timely to maybe say something. I didn't know that, um, to all of us if, um, with local, um, city elections happening, I don't, I don't know how much we would get, statewide representation asking for us, but, um, just as a good conversation or update or information that, um, if you want to endorse someone, there's, um, maybe some conversations to have or some thought. You know, what happens if the person who you are endorsing doesn't end up winning their seat? And then you're trying to advocate for education in there in a role that you advocated for and an opponent, it may, it's just good information to chew on a little bit and then also, um, be aware of how you're utilizing your board, um, name in any endorsement like that.
Very good.
Oh, I asked her what the time was for this, the 24th. Did you, I didn't see it right on that thing. I saw that.
Yeah, I don't know. They're usually like dinner at six, 5:30 or six. Oh, John knows.
Dinner at six and, um, discussion starting at 6:30 was the last one I saw, um, a week or two ago. So it could have changed, but I don't think it did.
All right. Anything, yeah, go ahead.
So, um, I have OSBA coming up, but I did sit on this, um, rule schools committee and I don't know if you guys want. So we had our first official, we've had three meetings, um, and we've talked about the definition of a rule school and, um, how to define to make sure who would be on the rule school. Do we want to define it by numbers? Do we want to define it by a definition? Do we want to define it by, define it by challenges? Do we want to let each school define themselves if they're rural or not? Um, and so we're working on that right now. So if you have any input that you would like to, um, send my way to let me know because our next meeting is on the 15th, I believe. And we're going to try to come up with a definition and then we'll split into committees. And I'm coach, I'm chairing one of the subcommittees. Um, and then we'll go from there and get goals and, and mission statements and stuff. So if you have any questions about that, let me know.
Another thing I'll add to this topic is, Another thing I'll add to this topic is, um, it is OSBA election season and we have to, as a board nominate someone for our region and that someone who's done an incredible job is our very own Don Watson. So there's some recommended language in here Denise about, is there a reason, do we need to move this up to an action item? Okay, just. Okay. Okay. Yeah. So she includes, she included some recommended motion language. If we wanted to, um, move, um, nominating Don. Don, are you interested in still serving on the OSBA board? I guess I should ask you, confirm that.
Thank you. Yes, I'm very interested. I'm kind of, I feel like I finally am getting a voice and under movement coming forward. At the summer convention that we talked about, Sarah and I was going to try to get, um, some local legislation group together with, um, OSBA. And I feel like I've just got this big momentum. It's really weird. You only get two years because you get like this big momentum and I'm on all these subcommittees and I would really like to continue the momentum. I feel like it's a benefit to not only our school, but for our region.
I would agree. So if a person wanted to, we could move to, um, moving that nomination to an action item and then we can take action on that. Great. Yep. And that's nomination of OSBA Board Position Five, Southern Region. We move to an action. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Take it to a vote, Rebecca. We're, we're, we've made a motion, or Rick has made a motion to, um, suspend the rules to move nominating our OSBA nomination to an action.
We're nominating, I just say yes.
You just say yes. Yes. This is just for the rules part. Sorry. I should have explained that better. Polly?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Rick? Don?
Yes.
I vote yes. It's now been moved to an action item. And so now we need a motion to nominate Don for the OSBA Board Position Five, Southern Region.
I'll do it. I moved that the Phoenix School Board nominate Don Watson for the OSBA Board Position Five in the Southern Region. Yay.
Moved by Polly, second by Rick. Any discussion? I don't have, yes. Thank you.
And thank you guys for voting for me and moving this forward because now I can fill out the paperwork and let everyone know that I'm running. So that, cause sometimes there's a lot of questions. Some people think I'm doing a great job and wouldn't want to run if I was running and some may not. But this way they know and then they can make an educated guess.
I agree. That was a good move. Okay. We'll vote. Rebecca?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Polly? Nancy?
Yes.
Rick? Don?
I'm going Epstein.
I vote yes. Motion carries. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I'll meet a fire update. Anything?
I'll just say that, uh, our community care, um, specialists are really taking this on as well because that's a part of our community care is, uh, making sure we're staying up to date on housing and, and support for our impacted families. And so, uh, they've been attending some meetings that have been happening recently and just appreciate that support as well. And, um, they've been getting very involved.
I'd love to hear reports from them as they attend those and come back and tell us what's happening.
I think, uh, a community care program report as a whole would be fantastic.
Yes.
There's a celebration happening here, right? At Phoenix Elementary on the 15th, right? I think it's, is it, is it?
Seven.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, yeah.
Okay.
And there's also a long-term recovery group event, uh, either at Blue Heron Park or the high school, depending on smoke and weather issues. So, um, it's on the 10th, on the 10th. So the 10th and the 17th will have some activity on our campuses potentially.
Can you let us know by email those times?
You bet.
Okay.
I have a quick question. One of the flyers I saw said something about, um, local, local representatives or something. And then it was sponsored by the school and other places. So I was, I had seen it on Facebook and I was wondering if that, if the community was expecting the board to be there the way it was worded, or I'm sorry, I'm throwing you a curve ball.
No, is that, was it the 17th event or was it the 10th?
I want to say the 17th event.
Okay, we can check with the City of Phoenix who's kind of driving that and then we'll see. I, I think just in partnership with the Phoenix Talent Schools, I don't know how that flyer is worded, but.
I'll have to, I'll look at the flyer and then I'll find it and then I will send it to you because I was, the wording was just kind of weird. Like, am I expected to be there by the public or not?
Okay. Anything more? Great. Equity, diversity and inclusion. Do we have an update? Was there a committee meeting? Or, or any other discussion?
We have not met during the summer, but I am, um, excited to have, um, in the presentation that I was with for Every Student Belongs at the high school, there, there was an invitation for folks to join or folks to join that EDI committee, which is great. Um, I'm also really excited about, um, like future conversations and education that we can provide and engage staff with around equity, diversity and inclusion bias. And, um, really excited that there will be, um, a process to report bias incidents, which was shared at the high school. And I am making an assumption that this information also got shared at the other schools as well. Um, and my hope is that we can come together and really provide a robust, like, conversation, education to support folks that will be, um, looking out for bias incidents and, and really how do we structure it? And how do we engage everybody that we're hoping will participate in the incident reporting? Not, I'm not inviting people to participate in bias incidents, but this is great because, um, we're really inviting like staff, students, parents, community partners, that's it is to really report that and give us this opportunity to, to. My hope is it gives us an opportunity to really be thoughtful about the way bias incidents are addressed here. And, um, so I was, again, I'm grateful that there will be a process. And I think it'll help us be accountable. It'll help us just create a safer, more inclusive, diverse spaces here.
And I imagine with that, there'll be data and reporting on those incidents, right, Brent? If, if, if we're collecting, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
That would be good for accountability too.
Um, the other thing that, you know, as, as we're, we're sharing information with, um, with staff, my strong recommendation and, um, invitation is for the board to really participate in EDI trainings and conferences. I know that we have, while we have conversations, um, I'm not sure how, I'm not sure how much we really understand each other when we hear these words. Sometimes I think that we hear them so often that they might like not really, we have a general idea of what they mean, but might not like fully understand what they mean. And I think that coming to common understanding of language will really help us have more robust conversations and give us an opportunity to have a dialogue to really understand what these mean. Because what something might be like offensive or disruptive for me, it might not be for somebody else and it's not ill-intended. It might just be that they don't understand, right? Things impact us a little bit differently. I love when we can have conversations of why, um, these topics are really important. Because again, if you've never had to be really thoughtful about, um, about equity, diversity and inclusion, it can be really easy to just dismiss it as not important, but I really want to give people an opportunity to see the value in these conversations. And again, it gives us an opportunity to really serve our students better, which is why we're here. And not just students, but staff and because we do have staff that are diverse. Um, and my hope is that we just continue to augment that, um, that workforce that is more diverse, more aware and that we can really share like the beauty and how it really amplifies who we are as a school district by having diverse and, um, diverse voices that are truly included, not just tokenized.
I agree. Thank you. Any more discussion? Okay. Um, review budget committee applications. So, um, Denise reached out to the three committee members who, whose term, if you will, was up. Um, and we have two people who have reapplied, which is wonderful. So though, there, those applications are there for your review. Any questions about that?
I'll just mention that the third wanted to, but they actually moved into the Medford School District. So, um, it does not eligible.
Correct.
The one we put, uh, pointed in the spring, L.
So we. Yeah, I agree.
When does this close?
These will be for action item for these two next time. And then we will just keep one open. We have one remaining opening that we will, uh, keep open. It's advertised on the website and we will present that to the board if we get an application.
I remember last time we were talking about maybe more widely publicizing this opening. I don't know if that happened or not. Not beyond putting it on the website. Like on social media or something.
Social media.
Is it?
Yeah. Cause we both shared it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Was policies. That was probably, that was Polly's social media person. Thanks. That was that your intern who shared it, Polly?
Uh, I would, might just suggest oftentimes it's a, you know, an invitation. I think a call or there's, you know, people that.
Yeah. If any of our board members knows someone who lives within the district and might be interested in serving in that capacity, please reach out to them. Okay. Uh, review budget calendar for 23, this is 23, 24. Is that correct?
Yes. Cause it will be the budget calendar for the next adopted budget.
Okay.
And yeah, as we put this together, that reflects similar dates as we've been doing in the past. Okay.
Any questions on the budget calendar for 23, 24? Okay. We'll move on. Employee handbook is there for your review. We taking action on this or is this just for our information? So this is just for our review. If you have any questions about the employee handbook, please direct them to.
Jessica, and I might add that this is one of the most comprehensive and it is updated with the other policies. It is the most comprehensive handbook that we've had in years and years. So, um, thank you, Jessica Hamlin and her team for, um, updating this for our staff. Yeah. Okay.
Okay. This was a meaty meeting, everybody. We're not done yet. Um, this student representative appointments. I, I only chuckle because we're just tackling a lot of really important issues in one night. So any, um, thoughts on, um, the timeline for appointing new student reps? I, I believe conditionally on our draft agenda, it's on there. Do we have it on there to interview student reps, Brent? I'm just going to turn it to you.
Well, thank you. It is on for action the next meeting.
Which it's just a draft.
Interviewing a point. Yeah. So we could have that in for inter, information discussion, um, and direct, uh, Kay, uh, Kaylin and probably Chris to advertise, um, student representatives to the board, uh, right as soon as we get back to school and when he gets kids to start sharing that. So we can certainly do announcements. I'm not sure when you have your first PHTV, but we can certainly get something out to the whole staff. It was talk about having a school board member, you know, just, uh, be around whether it's the beginning of school or, um, a lunch period to just, uh, chat with people, uh, maybe get, we do have a, um, current student that has served the board, um, that is, is currently in, and we can maybe interview her or have her share some things, talking points. So we do have to get that on and we'll, we'll direct our staff to make sure we advertise that as quickly and as soon as possible.
And I think in addition to the timeline, one, one of the things we need to decide is the actual logistics of how we want to make that appointment. We talked, we've talked a lot about this and we've heard, if you went to summer board, we heard some great presentations on this. And, and I'll just say specifically, one thing I'm interested in is perhaps not announcing the appointments at the meeting where all the kids are gathered. Cause I think that's been a source of, um, consternation for some of our kiddos. So.
I actually disagree, but.
Yeah. That's fine. That's why we're a board of seven. So in any event, we need to discuss that too. And my recommendation would be we discuss the timeframe and, and the method that we choose to make that appointment.
So October 20, right, is our at PHS meeting, which was the time we were hoping to have interviews or have them start. I can't remember what, but it feels like the daytime meeting was a marker of some sort.
So it, in the past, it's, that's been their actual first meeting. Last year, I think that's when we did the interview and vote. I think it works better if they're appointed already by that time and their first meeting, when their peers come in to sit down and talk to the board and ask questions that they are actually a part of the board. So that, that timing worked out, um, which would mean if we have this on for information discussion and talk about process on the 15th of September, and then interview that first meeting in October, we could, whatever the process may be, we could have them appointed by that second meeting in October, which is the day meeting at the high school. If that all makes sense. Okay.
Okay. Any other thoughts on this topic? Okay. Board self-evaluation timeline. So tonight we adopted the board self-evaluation. So this is on here for a discussion on when do we want to fill that out? Next time, next meeting? So fall? Nancy said spring. Anyone want to support?
I was thinking like January 5th. If you're a new board member and you come on, I'm just thinking like calendar wise, right? If you're a newly elected board member and your first meeting is July, kind of feels like you need a little bit of time to be part of it before you can self-evaluate. So I would, based on that thought process, I would think somewhere in the late winter, early spring.
I would say with Sarah and my thought process is because usually at the OSBA National Convention, they have a workshop on self-evaluation. And so then if someone had more questions or if it was our first time, then we could go to that and then kind of understand the process. Or if it was our first time, then we could go to that and then kind of understand the process a little better. Some people. Like myself, sometimes that helps to have to talk it out in a group full of people before I sit down from the paper. And then also, I think going through the self evaluation would probably be a good. Um, like study session type thing, and so maybe work it around when we would have a study session.
Me too, Rick.
I also might suggest just we've kind of revamped our evaluation process and now it includes staff. Self evaluating at the beginning of the year, so maybe the board just does that on their own. Like their self evaluation as a, you know, see themselves as an individual and then the group evaluations in the spring, so. Uh, and that's, that's not necessarily needs to be public or anything like that, but just uh kind of get used to using the tool.
That could also be something that we potentially do in July as we have our work study kind of as. Set goal, goals or uh from the summer kind of look and then maybe update it. Later on in. The year.
And then that would give a new board member, they wouldn't necessarily self evaluate themselves, but then they would know. They would kind of give them a clue of um how to be a good board member, and I think that would start maybe making conversation, hopefully. Making conversation so that everyone could learn and grow.
Any other thoughts on this? I, like you, Sarah, I thought about the timing of. Uh, a potential new board member coming on and how that would work. Um, but I also agree that. If you do something, the question then is, well, now what do we do with it? Um, and I think summer probably affords us our best opportunity to. At least, you know, if we do it, say, late spring, early summer. Now we have the summer as part of our normal process where we're having those types of discussions to have the, well, what now? Discussion, so um, yeah, just my thoughts. Polly?
Can you remind me again when we do Brent's evaluation?
It's late winter, February?
Typically, uh, a meeting in February and then March is. February, March is.
Okay.
Before spring.
Early spring, late winter, yeah. So what next? We just um. At some point, will we have to take action on deciding? When we want to do that or just to, so do we, do we have any consensus now when we want to fill this out? We thinking, what are we thinking?
I I was just kind of going back to Sarah's point. I mean, we do have policy that we're supposed to evaluate. Ourselves as a board and and uh, I mean, just knowing that, well, you don't need to take action on when. It just, you know, I think we need to agree at some point when it makes sense, so I don't know if a decision needs to be made now. But if it's gonna be later on, then we can start discussing that then.
Another idea, because this is new, one suggestion could be to fill it out at the start of the school year. And then, and then revisit it. At the end of the school year and then the end of the school year could then become the de facto time, but. Feel like it might be helpful to have a baseline of where we are right now. I don't know, just a thought.
I agree.
Okay. Okay, so um, do we feel like two weeks is a reasonable amount of time to fill it out? And we can add it to and discussion item for next meeting?
I would say yes, and if you notice that Rick and his wisdom said this already earlier, that we should just do it now.
Yeah, he did say that. Could save a lot of time.
So.
He's already filled it out while we're sitting here.
Can I just get clarification on how we're, how we would want to do this process? So this is. As a board member, I'm looking over the self evaluation and I'm filling it out and then I what? Then we discuss it at a board meeting, then we make directives, what?
Yeah, does anyone have any, yeah. My thought was just that we would all bring our evaluations for a shared discussion as under information and discussion, but. What do you think?
I'm getting the terror giggles. Um, that's why I suggested it, so I could go to the conference in November to figure out what to do with the information. Um, but I think you could, I just, I was gonna type up and see if they had it online. Because that was my concern, like what do, what do we do with the information? Are we spending this time in discussion? In a valuable way and then we're gonna go to the school board meeting in November and go, oh shoot, we should have done it this way. Um, but I I think that's probably wrong, right? So either one I'm comfortable with will eventually.
Why don't we do, everybody can fill it out if you'd like, and if you have something in particular you'd like to share at the next meeting, we can, and then. We can kind of go from there. It doesn't have to be too, too formal or exhaustive, but. I'm kind of curious to go through and fill it out, see where I think we're at, so. But yeah, I think there's wisdom done in what you're saying. Okay, so fill it out, and if you feel like sharing, the next meeting, that's how we'll handle it for now. Does that work?
Because, right, this, just as another, sorry, clarifying point, this is a self evaluation. And this is a public meeting.
Correct.
So.
It's, it's a.
It's a willing to share type of, so just.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a question. I don't know the answer to, and I don't know if you do. If that's the case, if we have it written, I guess. I still feel a little bit. Because if this, if we're, if I have it written at a board meeting and it's there, if I have it like on my computer or on the piece of paper. It's public record then. Um, someone could ask for it later down the road.
Yeah.
Which I'm fine with, I'm just, I just want to make that so that we're all aware that if you bring your self evaluation. Someone could ask for it.
Do, would you like me to work with Denise and get some, some guidance on what other districts do with their self evaluations? Why don't we?
Yeah, that or we can, November's gonna be here before we know it.
Yeah, we could just wait till after the conference.
Look it over, kind of make.
Yeah.
You know, get familiar with it.
Okay. Let's just do that. Let's bring it back after the conference. Does that work for everybody? Okay. So let it be done. That's good. Okay. Moving along. Superintendent Board Operating Agreement. I do, it is not my interest to stifle any discussion, but there are three examples for your review. My recommendation for this would be to treat it like we did the self evaluation form and the board operating agreement. And perhaps appoint. A small. Or have Brent. Put together a, a small committee with a couple of board members to take board member input and. Come up with something for the board's consideration. If everyone's amenable to that. Unless somebody has something burning they want to offer or share about any of these examples.
I would just say any volunteers would be great too, if you want to be on this committee.
And I'm happy to be a part of that. If someone. If we're cool with that and somebody wants to join me, we could meet with Brent and. Discuss it further, and then if you have. Something very important to you, you want to make sure is included in any sort of board superintendent operating agreement that you pass that along to. Myself or someone else. Just a recommendation. Thoughts?
I'll sit in on this one again if.
Okay. I mean, we're pretty good at it at this point, right, Sarah? We've, we've got a good track record with the other two, so. Okay. Okay, so look over these agreements and if you have something that you strongly like or strongly dislike from some of these examples. That you want up for consideration, just pass it along to Sarah or myself and then we'll, we'll work with Brent on scheduling that. We, is this something we try to put together before, in two weeks? I would say not. I would say this is important, but not a high priority at this juncture, so. Um, but I, I think.
You guys call.
Yeah, we'll figure it out. If the, unless, as long as the board's okay with that, I think let's let school start. And let's, let our superintendent run school for a little bit. Okay, good. Uh, okay, board policy rewrite sections K and L. Are there any comment on? The policies that it will be up for consideration on next meeting's consent agenda?
I think it's in K or um, I just have a quick question and I. Um, about um. Students choosing names, like names that they would like to be called and. If that's changed in a computer system and, and then. If a parent doesn't know that a student has decided to change. How they'd like to be called and that's, there's some legal documents and so can you? I apologize for putting you on the spot on this. I severely apologize for putting you on the spot on this, but um, someone. A community member was asking me about it and I, I think I saw parent in the parental rights, I think during my reading through of this. Um, it was addressed a little bit, so just wanted to see what your district policy was.
Yeah, so we have our student information system allows for a preferred name and a student can use uh. Request that to be used as a preferred name and that is in. Uh, our student information systems where our staff can uh utilize that. Parents aren't necessarily um. Privy to that. Sometimes we've had some very difficult conversations on preferred names uh recently and so. Um, that, but that's an option for us that we have that in our Power School. Uh, option. We have legal name, preferred name, and then we, when it's rostered, we use the preferred name.
So what happens when an emergency or something happens or your, your, your parent is calling in to. Excuse an absence, how? It feels like an extra layer of, or if the school is calling home to say attendance. How is that addressed?
Yeah, the, the attendance is, is generic. Your child has been absent from. Um, and it's addressed when they call in, that's on the screen, so our staff are taught. If, to look if they have a preferred name, to that, to look at that as in case that's different, if the parent's calling in and that. The parent is using the preferred name, they can do that, so, but they, our staff member will know who they're talking about, because both of them. The information's there in that same screen.
Does um, communication go home to the parents? With any preferred name usage on it?
I, I'll have to look at that. I don't know that answer.
It's, is there?
I, I understand what's going on, but I also, as a parent, it. Would be a surprising thing to call and.
Those are uncomfortable conversations, but they're important to have.
So, um, and just. You know, legally doctor note, you know, type of thing comes from. So I guess legal is still, the legal name of the student, right, is still in. And that's what.
Information system, yeah.
What goes on their diploma?
They get to choose, I believe they get to uh choose their diploma when they say, hey, is this what you want on your diploma?
Even though it's a preferred, not a legal name? Yeah, because that's a legal document, right?
You know, I can check on that. I don't know.
No, oh.
I know, because my child tried to, do you do a preferred name on his document and it wasn't allowed?
Oh.
Oh, okay.
So.
Thank you. I thought we used that, we were able.
So, but it might have been because. No, I don't think so, but um.
Okay, well.
We're laughing because we know Keenan and it's.
It's because your.
Was Aiden, well, same thing.
Document, so if you're putting a preferred, that legally, so.
There, there was um, some conversation he had and um, they, the. Staff member didn't actually, so that's a good conversation, because the staff member was like, I don't know if you can just pick your name on your diploma. And so that, the staff member didn't know what to do and um, then um. The child came and talked to me and I said, well, you know, do you, do you, what name do you want? And we ended up. Deciding as a family, the name, but it was a discussion in the, in the staff members that I don't think you can do that.
And I'll get clarification because if it, I mean, if it's not a preferred name that they've had in the student information system. That's probably the case. I, I will get clarification on if they can use that on any legal document on this.
So just, so this is only in our system as a preferred name, not any legal sort of, there's no. Legal changing, right? We're recognizing that a student wants to be called by a preferred name. Other than what maybe they were registered under, I'll just write generically, and we're honoring that request. Um, I.
Which is a requirement. Also.
Based in statute, I'm assuming. Yeah, okay.
You, I'm s- are you referring to a specific policy in this section or just a general policy question?
Read it and I apologize that I don't know specifically what policy I read it in, but I feel like I read it.
In, in this, okay, great.
Under parental, it was either under parental or student rights in this K policy section that. Triggered it um.
Got it. Thank you.
I, I will get clarification though on, on like diplomas and, and legal documents for that.
Can't a parent log into Power School and see all this information?
Not necessarily all the demographic information, but the school related information grades and.
Would it say the pa- preferred name?
I don't, I don't know that answer, so. We can certainly have, we shouldn't have let Tiffany le- leave, so she can. And feel free, we don't have to have that at a board discussion, you can actually come in and, and have a conversation that we can email out, yeah.
All right, any more discussion on KL, K and L? All right, the um, draft agenda is, oh, go ahead.
I have another policy I wanted to.
Oh, please.
But you took KL, sorry. I wanted to talk about KJ and the AR. Um, and this is just kind of. Asking maybe what we need to have conversation with staff, so today I was talking to two staff members. Um, and they were talking about the vape system in the bathrooms at the high school. And then how they get alarmed on their phone when the vape comes off. And there was some situations where.
Can I, can I stop you for just a minute? I didn't follow what you said. They, meaning who got alerted?
Two staff members.
The staff gets alerted, okay.
So, what happened?
So there's vaping monitors. In the bathroom, and so when they, when there is, when it, someone goes to the restroom. At the high school and I think the middle school and they use a. Bait pen or whatever, or some other kind of, like a cigarette, the alarm goes off. But it just goes off to staff in their phone. And they get an alarm and then staff then chooses what to do. What's happening is a lot of times it's, we're running out spaces or people are coming in adults. And they're going into the restroom and vaping in the restroom. It's, they're not supposed to because there's not supposed to be tobacco on school property, but. When I looked at the policy real quick, the policy states that, but the form that we give out to the people renting. Does not state no tobacco, and so I'm wondering if somehow, that's why I was. Wanting staff to kind of have a conversation with those that are monitoring so that we're not spending staff time. It sounded like there was one situation where uh, it wasn't a school thing, we had let someone, another group run out the prop. The space and somebody was going in the restroom every forty-five minutes and vaping, so that's taking time. And somebody was going in the restroom every forty five minutes and vaping, so that's taking time of staff. To like look and make sure, is there students in the building, you know, do we need to go investigate it? Is the football team they're practicing or is it just, and so I, I just wanted to maybe. They were kind of a little frustrated on the situation that they're constantly coming up when there's no students in there and it, and it's taking some time, especially. One times get really busy. Yeah, does that make sense and so? Well, that's what I'm, that's why I'm saying, maybe that's what we need to do before we pass it.
My guess is it's an oversight and you'd probably like to have that on the agreement, right?
Yeah, we can certainly, any staff member can come into, we should certainly review this and we can absolutely. Put whatever language we want on that to address that concern.
And I would recommend perhaps an additional charge if we determine that someone who's rented our facility vapes in the bathroom as part of a. Event that someone's paying for.
We can look at doing that or jeopardizing future use of the facility. Charging then extra trying to get that additional charge might be more difficult, but limiting them from using the facility again is a little bit. Easier that we can control.
Yeah. Good, good catch, Tom. Look at you, sharp and jet lagged, but still sharp.
All because I had conversation with two staff members today.
And you remembered it despite being jet lagged, it's good. All right, any others? Yeah, that's in this section too, yeah. Which we tabled. Yeah. Yeah, so. Yeah, so it's, it's actually not. Yeah, and, and. To be clear, that policy is actually not part of this because. It wa, it wasn't included in this because we haven't taken any, made any changes to the previous policy that we discussed today. So it's not, it's actually not up for consideration yet. As for next board meeting, does that make sense? Even though it falls under the K section, it's not in our packet, it won't be as part of this packet in the consent agenda on the fifteenth. And I think, and so we'll discuss, I think weapons, we'll have more discussion on weapons policies in the future.
So just to clarify, so. The only updates will be to the actual facility use form and clarifying the. Process or highlighting there's no vaping and no tobacco on campus. Whatever process it might be for, if that is, becomes a violation. And we remove KGBB from this consent agenda for next time.
Yeah, and I don't think it was actually. On there, it was just referenced because it was part of the policies they sent us. So, yeah, they, what happens is they send us the list, here's all the policies in K that you can adopt. But staff did not include that for us to consider adopting because of the way the other policy, the related policy is written. Yeah, because there, those policies are connected, so. That KGBB will not be up for consideration on the next consent agenda. But it will be something that we'll discuss. Cause it is an important topic, so, yeah. And then. Get some clarification on whatever specific and maybe Sarah, if you can get the specific policy, that'd be great. That could be one of the questions that can send out. Okay, great. Anymore? Okay, so the draft agenda is in there for your review, the interview and appoint student representatives will not be an action item. And we've already taken care of the OSBA board nomination, so. If you have any other questions or suggestions about the next agenda, please let me know. And with that. Yes. Yeah, well, let, does it, you want it for the record? Well, okay, let me adjourn and then you can, okay, we're adjourned.